It is seven o'clock. We'll call our December twenty first, two thousand twenty city council work session to order. Do you have a form? Everybody is here. Our public forum is temporarily suspended. Bill discussion. So you want to have any questions with the bills? There are no questions with the bills. How about the consent agenda items? Any discussion with the consent agenda?
Council President, there was the the meeting from the zoning commission. There were, it's probably not a big deal, but Jeremy Hanfler was absent, but at the end of it, it said that the meeting was closed by Jeremy Hanfler, so.
I don't know if he joined them or if it.
No, he wasn't there.
Should I go by Joe Jack?
And I don't know, I was a visitor and I don't know what that means to be on there or not, but it's not listed as a visitor. I'm not listed as a visitor.
Well, ask that be updated. Any other consent agenda items?
I'm not sure if it's not on the consent agenda or new business. I was scrolling, looking for it, and this one is mine or two, and it's the, uh, yeah, it is item H on the consent agenda with the rescheduling of the holidays. It says there's three dates in conflict on Monday holidays, and then there's four dates listed.
Yeah, I know it's that too.
Thank you. Council informational only items. Update Shields' court hearing.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to provide the council with a quick update on where we are with the Shields matter. As I referred last time, we did with the administrative hearing, and so we're moving forward with trying to get the district courts to issue an order for cleanup, as well as continuing to pursue the criminal charges against Mr. Shields. At this point, those hearings are scheduled for January fourth and January fifth. Tuesday, January fifth is the hearing on the motion to to actually issue an order allowing the city to go in and clean up all of the nuisance provisions, but also the dangerous provisions involving the House. I will be reaching out to staff members next week to sign affidavits and then submitting that as well, but I just wanted to make sure it's all on your calendars. I don't, it will be by Zoom, so there will be a a link available. At this point, I don't foresee needing any of your of your participation in the hearing, but if you do have questions, please do let me know.
Mr. President, I have a question for John on that and maybe both Greg's also. As far as this process, how long it's taken and what it's costing the city, which we may not be able to collect any of it. Is there any way you can kind of rough out a timeline and look at the expenses? I know we have this resident that continues to bring issues to us, and he's upset with the process. Well, we're following the process the way we have to. I would like him to know that we're doing everything we can, but this is a process that has to be followed now. It's changed, I think, in probably the last six years or so.
Yeah, so I mean, we've, we're reaching up to our attorney, obviously, to see what the guy, I don't have the exact dates and the time or the dollar mark that we have invested in, but we can definitely put that together and get us a justice out there where.
That's the problem. I think it'd be interesting to see what it comes to for us every time this happens and they don't play along with the rules.
Sure, yeah. We, we have that. Our attorney bills are very well documented as to, you know, what project they're working on, so we can easily identify the cost and, you know, in terms of time, in the initial effect with him was a long time, but since we've got attorneys involved, it's been over six months, I'd say, since.
Even the modest downtime is taking, taken for PD and Greg and Brad and John, probably the entire office, it's been rather continual, so, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
And add something to the mayor's question?
Please.
Just, Mayor Zooko, just to be clear, this is a, there are two things that are complicating this matter. One is, we actually did a cleanup, as you remember, back in July, August timeframe, so this is really the second, the second enforcement action on that side of things. The other thing that is complicated, of course, is that we entered into the area of having a dangerous building involved, which doesn't line up with anything that I know of that the city has dealt with before, or necessarily a usual nuisance property situation, so just for your information and for communicating that this is a different and in some ways more serious situation.
I understand. That dangerous property hasn't been that long a bit, so even if we cut that out or added a little amendment to it, doesn't matter. It's just been a long, long time and very costly to us.
Absolutely.
COVID nineteen sick leave options. Laurie?
Good evening, Council and Mayor, Council President. So, um, with the, if you recall, we had passed or adopted a policy related to COVID nineteen and sick leave options. So the Freedom of Care Act, there was some federal rules and regulations that we were required to provide up to eighty hours of sick time to our employees when they had COVID nineteen, specific COVID nineteen instances or issues. In addition to what the federal regulations were, the city opted to do an official eighty hours, so there was up to one hundred and sixty hours available to employees that had COVID-related issues. The, at this point, the federal regulations are set to expire at the end of this year, as well as the city's eighty hours of leave time for COVID will expire at the end of the year as well. Now, staff, we discussed this a little bit. We don't know what the federal regulations are going to bring come January one. And just wanted to get a sense from the council if we wanted to continue with the city's eighty hours of COVID, COVID relief, COVID employees. Just as staff discussing it, there are some pluses and minuses. You know, employees can use the eight, up to eighty hours. It does not get subtracted from their sick leave under the policy. You know, so this could provide those employees who have COVID issues going into the first of the year with those eighty hours, but it does set a precedence. You know, we have to make some clear distinctions in the policy as to what our goal is. But before, we did a lot of light work on that, wondering what the census from the council as far as extending or continuing that leave.
And I would say, add, Council President, I mean, that the, you know, the challenge there is we want to, we want to take the best precautions that we can, and that's if someone has an own exposure or has symptoms, we want them to stay home. So it's, and we just had an instance with a, with an employee where they're, the way the recommendations were and best practices according to the CDC guidance, they actually had to be out for almost twenty-four days to, to get through because of the way their, you know, exposed, exposure was with somebody that they couldn't couldn't quarantine or isolate from that, you know, where we're stuck in a position where we had to fall kind of to back-to-back timelines with, with the, with the process, so it really extended that timeline, so that when we're putting employees in positions like that, we, we want, the best thing for everybody is that they just stay home, but at some point, that becomes really a challenge if they're asked to use their own leave time in order to make accommodations. Now, things are happening at the federal level. I'm not certain if they're, you know, if anything's going to come out before the end of the year, extending that or offering an extension to those benefits. But I would still think we want to, you know, move forward with something that's, that's putting in abundance of caution for our employees and avoiding the risk that they're not reporting exposures, or they're not reporting symptoms, or they're not staying home because they're afraid using their sick leave to, you know, excuse me.
What else was sick time before, though? I mean, that seems like that's why we give it to them.
And, and for most, that's not an issue, and then for some, there may be certain challenges in terms of the, I'm going to just say it again.
Mr. President, you know, just a couple of points. That eighty hours obviously is two weeks, and then you throw in three weekends, which is six more days. That turns into more than twenty-four, twenty-five hours, or twenty-four, twenty-five days. And so if they're covered by that federally, could they, I know some places have done, if you have sick day after that, you have to use it, or sick leave. And if not, then this is kind of in the bank for you. Have there been any thoughts about that?
So just, Council President, as a, as a point of clarification, the federal regulation and the federal offering of the eighty hours expires at the end of the year. So come January one, there is no more federal, at this point, there is no federal regulation that we have to provide eighty hours. So at, starting January one, any time that is taken off due to COVID would be from their own personal sick leaves.
Mr. President, I have a question. When they, when the employees are concerned, are they, are they talking about the concern of the FMLA time that they're going to be given, that they're, that they might be given up, or what, what is the concern? Or is it their personal vacation or personal UTO time that are they concerned for?
So in, in some instances, when you have newer employees, they don't have a bank of leave to use. Others may have situations where they don't, if, if they, you know, if they're not sick, they aren't going to report that they've had a COVID contact, or, or may not report that they've had a COVID contact, coming in work and having the potential of, of transferring back to other employees because they don't have time available, they don't have time coming. John, please feel free to add in here.
So, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think this has been, like, coming up from employees. We're, we're trying to bring attention to this because we don't know what the change in the federal status is going to be. And you have a policy that's, that, a practice that we created that was specifically tied to the federal process. So they couldn't access the additional eighty hours after the federal eighty hours unless they, they went through the federal. Those reforms and, and everything, you know, was in, in place in order to be able to access that. You had to be through the federal process first, and then we additional ones. So it's, the question I, the, the discussion that we were hoping to have is just, as we move forward, if there is an additional federal funding, we're still wanting to encourage and make available for employees the, an opportunity to, you know, not and to follow the best practices and follow our preparedness plan as it's still drafted, and the preparedness plan is still in fact. But they may, there, there may be potential where employees aren't motivated to do that when they have whole banks of sick time available to them and, you know, are and choose to not report things as, and, you know, otherwise may if they, that they're more of an exhaust every, almost their sick day, just to quarantine, or even if they weren't sick. That's, that's kind of the discussion that we're, we're hoping to bring to attention with this is that I still think it's of the best interest that we encourage employees to, you know, do that reporting. If they have symptoms, then report it, you know, don't come to work, or make sure that if they have an exposure, that they are staying home. But we had, and, you know, I've heard, we've already known and experienced that we have employees that.
Would it be an option, Sergeant Paul?
Can you hear all that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Repeat that.
Must be down some connection issues.
Well, my, my question is, is, is it mandated that they have to take any paid leave when they go on this, or is it, it doesn't affect their FMLA leave at all, does it?
At this point, no, it does not.
No, because there's, yeah, the federal, the federal rules are in addition to, it's an additional protection relative to FMLA. I don't know when they, when they, or what might change, so.
Council President, if I might offer a little bit of information here. One of the things I, I spent the day doing was looking through the five thousand page bill. Small portions of it that is up before Congress. And under it, the requirement, and then also the payroll tax credit for employers for the eighty hours of paid sick time would continue through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty. And so that would be the idea. There also are additional credits for the FMLA, sorry, excuse me, additional time under FMLA, as there has been, that would also be extended.
Well, we should just maybe follow the federal lead, and if theirs expires, ours expires. If theirs continues, ours continues to whatever that date is.
I think we'll know a lot more this week with the passing of the law when it goes, goes into effect. But when we were discussing this last week as staff, that wasn't passed yet, so.
Oh, I have concerns that it sounds like we have to give a master leave so they stay home for the good of all the fellow employees. That's what I'm giving out of it, and I would hope that would be the case.
We're requiring, so, under the CDC guidelines, so I think the, the longest length of time that I've seen under CDC guidelines is if you have a contact with someone who's tested positive and you cannot isolate from them, you have to isolate for their quarantine period plus an additional fourteen days. So for, for a total of twenty-four days. Or perhaps longer, depending on when the person, the origin, the, the person that has tested positive for COVID, depending on when they got tested, when their symptoms changed, and yeah, when, when their symptoms changed and when they got tested. So so you potentially could be out for twenty-four days and not be sick.
Yeah, and I, I think that our point there is, that's our, our preparedness plan, so we're, we're setting rules guiding those employees that you are to stay home based on our, our COVID rules that we have. So now we're correcting to stay home even if they aren't experiencing any symptoms.
Well, last again, do I apply that eighty hours is two weeks and three, or Saturday, Sundays is six more days, and it would have to run together consecutively, so you'd have the weekend before, and then your two weeks, and then you'd have with a weekend in the middle and then a weekend at the end, so if that's more than twenty-four days, that's why I'm wondering why the extra eighty, but that's a council decision.
Mayor Zooko, if I could just chime in on that one, I, I think the, some of the confusion is coming up with the concept of what two two weeks is in the eighty hours, so in this case, you would have a, you know, the eighty hours would be five, or it would be a total of ten calendar days, plus three weekends would actually be sixteen days.
And I, I think we should just move along. Sorry. We're, we're going to know more with the continues in the federal, and you're probably talking yourself in circles a bit if those rules are really just getting extended until March thirty-first. I don't know if we've really clarified this.
We're, we only have about eight minutes left, John, so move along. The city council's strategic visioning session.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to, yeah, I'll try to make this real quick. So part of the, part of the, the, the things that are coming out of the, our, um, grant process and the, in the strategic visions, strategic priorities that were adopted in the resolution, I think, indicate to, to, should indicate to us in this community that there's a, there is a desire to, to look forward and to try to do some planning for some community assets or, and things that are going to engage our community. There, with that, I think it's also very important that we talk about what are our needs internally, you know, with, with facilities, with staffing, with, you know, infrastructure projects that we have going on, you know, Greg brought up a couple meetings ago, we're talking about the, the street plans and, you know, those capital improvement projects that we have. And I just wanted to, you know, really give us an opportunity that we can, you know, put those projects on, on, you know, into a, a discussion and conversation about where are we going to try to prioritize things in this, in, at what points do we have the capital to be able to en- engage and do something beyond, you know, what we're doing today. I think we do have some opportunities, the way our debt services is starting to, some of our debt service issuances are starting to, to expire, come to end. That we have some, some ability to maybe take on that, some additional projects. And we just have some really important needs in our facilities that are beginning, going to be coming up in the next five, five years, just based on aging buildings and, you know, various expansion for departments and a police department where there, you know, there really are fully, you know, that, that building really can't fit them anymore with the, with what's going on in terms of how much, you know, staff is in the building and what passes that they can do and other things I think they need in a building. You know, and know in conversations I've had with, with Craig and talking about fire equipment, you know, looking down the road, and this is looking long down the road, we're talking about, you know, changes to different pieces of the equipment, and as we've experienced over the, you know, the long term, those, you know, every time we replace something, it tends to get a little bit bigger. And, you know, at some point, we're going to get to adding a piece of equipment or changing out a piece of equipment, and now that, that facility might be too small, we may need to make expansions to that. None of these things are, are really imminent, but they're definitely things that we want to, you know, be attentive to, and I think strategically plan out how we're going to fit them in. And then as we, you know, as we know, and the community has, has told us, they have desires to wanting to add different amenities or assets within our, within our community, and, you know, I think it's important that we consider those and we build them into the structure and the, and the plan for how they can be paid for. You know, and I, I know with the mobile office sales tax discussions that we've had in the past, you know, those are still, that, that to me is, is the opportunity there is in an access to a revenue source that we don't already have. You know, I know very much in this budgeting process, in all of my work, trying to be as basically conservative as possible that, you know, we don't want to go through raising taxes to have to cover all of these additional costs and expenses, so that's my, you know, a, a strength that I think I can have and, and bring to the conversation is to help us understand, you know, where do we, where, where are we at financially? What can we sustain as support? And then, you know, at what point in time do we, are we going to need to initiate these things? And I'd much rather be on the on the front of that and having these things planned out and, and developed before they, you know, something catastrophic happens or something that really demands and presses an imminence to a project taking place. You know, I don't want us to have to build a new city hall because our existing one had something dramatic happen. But I don't want to do the same at the golf course in the clubhouse, but, you know, if something happened, we don't want to be forced into making a decision about the firewall and you have to park the ladder chart outside for to be a year and a half while we build and expand on a new firewall because we can't fit it into the, you know, I think those are the considerations that we want to, we want to think about and plan for as we, we move forward. That said, I think it's also evident to me in my performance review and just observations that I've had and just, you know, some things that I think are, would be, would be valuable is that it would help for us to come together when the time is right or in the, you know, with, with the right means and facilitator, just to have a conversation amongst the council too about what are your priorities. I, you know, I talked about that in my, my update list recently and, and asking you some questions about, you know, what are some of the experiences that you're having, what are some of the motivations that you have in the council? And I really think that this would be very beneficial for all of us so that we can, you know, make some improvements so that I, I can have some awareness, that staff can have some awareness about, and that you all as council members can understand and, and really build on a commonality of why you're on the council and the things that you want to do for, for our community. And, and I don't think, no, that's not, not a statement that is critical to say that you're not, you don't get along and that you don't, you know, that you struggle in, in mitigation of how we operate. I think you do an excellent job, and I think there's, you know, we've especially had a lot of opportunities to navigate through this in a, in a very strange environment through this year and having all these meetings that we've had on Zoom, and I think you've navigated that really, really well. I've heard, you know, many other communities that have not done the things that we've done and, and still I think have been successful in, in moving things forward. So with that, I think I'm, you know, I, we're getting close to the time to start the regular meeting, but I just want for all you to, to consider and think about that and how we might want to structure that, and we can have more conversations about this in, in two thousand twenty-one, but I think it would really be beneficial for us to.
The council as well. We got one more minute. Any other item?
Mr. President, I just want to know that December twenty-eighth meeting at six thirty, is that still a go for everybody?
Um, I, yeah, is there?
Yeah, I, I, I will not be able to be there. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty is I, I'm gone.
Monday to twenty-eight? I will be gone. I could be here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Frank, what about you?
I'm available.
I'm done.
That's five of us. That would do it.
He said he was good.
Okay. It is time. We will adjourn our special work session, and we'll begin right away. Call our regular city council meeting of December twenty-first to order because it is seven thirty. it is seven thirty. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation under the.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law and here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I'll approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Liljigrin, second by council member Lundberg. Uh, roll call, please.
Canapla?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Approval of the minutes, special work session meeting of December seventh, two thousand twenty and the regular meeting of December seventh, two thousand twenty, approved. What is the wish of the council?
Will do approve.
Okay.
Motion by council member Canapla, second by council member Starly. Call roll, please.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Harry.
Approval of the bills, checks one zero three nine three two through one zero four zero five five, totaling one million six hundred six thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, approved. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by council member Starly, second by council member Hanson. Uh, call roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Carries.
Consent agenda. Economic Development Authority minutes, December two thousand twenty received. Fire report, November two thousand twenty received. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, December two thousand twenty received. Investment recap, second and third quarters, December fifteen, two thousand twenty received. Planning Commission minutes, December two thousand twenty received. Police report, November two thousand twenty received. Recycling report, October two thousand twenty received. Reschedule regular city council meetings, holidays two thousand twenty-one, firm. Reservation of Ken Koppus Patrol Officer, received. Wastewater report, November two thousand twenty, received. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Lundberg. Call roll, please.
Delka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Public hearings and hearings, we have none this evening. Old business, we have none. New business, um, item A, person personnel position descriptions, posting and salaries. Uh, the first one is engineering aid position description, pay grade and post, approve. Under Greg or Michaela.
Good evening, council president and uh council mayor. Um, this evening we have in front of you the engineering aid position script and point. Uh, I recall the past couple of years, we've tried twice now successfully to fill a position within the engineering department for some additional help. Um, and so we took another look at the uh the staffing requirements for the for the department and we came up with uh and the hoop position was the engineer gave its lower level uh position, basically an entry level or for staff, being able to try to train uh staff into that. And so this evening we are asking the council to approve the position description and then we will post that within the unions uh to see if we can find that answer for the position.
Council president, if I may add?
Please.
Um, this this is the position with the that graded out lower than what we had previously proved that was part of the budget, so it is a it is not a um it would have a net reduction in the overall budget um, us for for twenty twenty-one, um even if it were hired on uh minute their start was handled. So there would there would be no um the budget necessary to build this position.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I have a question. Now, this is just the posting position. I mean, with this COVID stuff going on and everything, how, you know, are we, when when would they, when would you look at bringing these people in or, you know, or is this just the posting and then and then deciding on what's gonna happen after that?
So this would be the posting. Um, with the con- union contract, we post by days internally. If we don't have a valid candidate within that period, then we post it externally to the public. Uh, being the grade that it is, I suspect we'll probably get a number of candidates internally uh for that position and then we'll be able to interview them at at that point after that. Um, and potentially on January fourth, we'd be looking at uh how filling those positions uh after we've had a chance to interview and review all of the applications for it. But we would be doing uh social distancing, masks and potentially Zoom meetings uh for that happen through that interview process.
Council president, I would add, we've we've interviewed and hired for during COVID at least three time full three full-time positions. Um, I think all of those who are in the police department. Um, we've had a number of seasonal positions that we've done interviews with uh through the golf course. Um, so it's not something new. Um, we've been through this process uh for recruitment and interviews uh through in the in the time of COVID, um, we've brought people online. Um, we do have a pretty solid process for onboarding employees, even though, you know, became us um leaving us at the end of the month. I think we'll be able to, you know, move that forward pretty quickly with with not a lot of disruption on that part, um, because she's done a really good job of laying the groundwork and templates for throughout uh of these positions.
President, I guess my concern more is we're not sure where this whole COVID stuff is gonna end this up. And um, I'm just not sure what we should we looking at, maybe waiting and uh until some of this is settled down to really see where we're gonna be at by the middle of the summer and or the, you know, our first quarter instead of going up and and hiring more people and then who knows where this stuff's gonna end up. Uh, I just feel better if we could do it more when things were settled down and and we had a better handle on things.
Mr. President, I um I know that our engineering has been working short for quite some time now. Um, so, you know, I I can work either way with that, but uh John, at agenda planning, you and Brad and I had the discussion about, you know, potentially uh if someone is hired internally, um, do we have to replace them right away depending on what their job is? Is that something we can still look at if we do hire?
I I I would definitely consider that. I know Greg and I and our future HR director would have a conversation about what those needs would be um depending on the the season and the workload from whomever, if it isn't an individual, then whomever it is that would be able to pull that appropriately. You know, there are some positions that this time of year are that are in low demand, um, but there are also some that are in high demand depending on how much snow is falling. Um, you know, it's it's it really can vary.
Okay, then, Mr. President, if if that were the case, if we were just uh posted internally and if some someone uh was qualified and put into there, I I think I could uh go along with that because then it would just be moving from one department to another. Um, so if that were the case, uh and it wouldn't be posted outside uh the city already, I think I could support that.
There a motion, the second?
Well, I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that we uh a- approve and post for the engineering aid position.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Lundberg. Any other discussion? I think that it's something that we need to do and we need to fill. They've been working short for quite a while and we've actually had to hire some outside help to support them and I think we need to get somebody there to help them.
I agree.
Call roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Carries.
Two patrol officer, full-time position, chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, I received a resignation letter from Ken Koppus and he will be leaving us probably at the end of March. Um, so I'd be requesting authorization to move forward and post uh that position and create an eligibility list. Kenny has done a great job for us, he's worked hard. Currently, he is the SRO at the high school. Um, he's been out there for a few years and has done a great job, so we will also have to look at uh posting that position, but we will do that, the SRO, School Resource Officer position, but we'll do that internally.
What is the wish of the council?
Will do approve.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Canapla, second by council member Liljigrin. Discussion. Mr. President, I would just say that that's gonna be a big loss to the department. I've heard nothing about positive uh words from residents regarding Kenny.
I think also from the school, I've talked to kids about him and I've talked to people that work up there, teachers, staff, they all think he does a wonderful job. Uh, I think he'd be hard to replace.
No other discussion, call roll, please.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Item three, resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-eight, establish two thousand twenty-one part-time temporary and seasonal salaries, adopt. John?
Council president, um, there is a um minimum wage increase uh coming next year uh based on the state requirements, so we we are modifying that. Um, our base grade is just going up by the minimum wage increase that the state is is going and not any other. Um, then it, you know, then it turns, the the staff schedules go up certain percentages between staffs and certain percentages. So that's how we're we're looking for twenty twenty-one.
What is the wish of the council? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zelka, second by council member Lundberg. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Carries.
Fire protection agreements, townships and city of Fort Ripley, approve.
Yes, council members, and uh, the current agreements that we have with the surrounding townships in the city of Fort Ripley for fire protection expire at the end of twenty twenty-one, uh, excuse me, at the end of twenty twenty. Um, staff met the with the townships representatives of the townships and the city of Fort Ripley um reviewed the contract. There are, as far as the formula of the contract, we made just one minor change to the formula. Um, it would be again a five-year term. The one change that we made to the formula was um, the existing contract calls for um a a capital increase of um four percent each year and we changed that from a percentage to a flat dollar amount. So um the the capital amount would increase by five thousand dollars each year. Then we look at the total budgets, including capital, um admin fee and um um the pensions, a part of the pension, works that all into a total amount and then there's a formula that we go through that's based on the number of fires over a five-year time period, the population and the market value. That comes out to a percentage of the budget that each entity is responsible for and then we take the total amount times the percentage to figure out which each department or which each township and city um contributes. So again, no changes to our existing contract, five-year term, and the only change is that we went from a four percent um increase to capital to a a flat five thousand dollars. So townships, for the most part, we're all agreeable to that. Um, we have signed contracts back from each of the townships with the exception of Pike Creek. Um, we have not received their agreement back. They did have some questions, staff met with them again to review. Um, we haven't had a response back from them. Um, we did send them a letter indicating that if if we don't get any type of response back by the end of the year, that um, you know, unfortunately, we won't be able to respond to fires in their township. Um, and we're we're waiting to hear back from them as far as what what they want to do. So what we'd be looking for from the council tonight is to approve the agreements.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreements.
Second.
Sorry, I missed two, second.
Be Starly.
Starly, thank you. Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Starly. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Fiscal agent, Little Falls Way finding Project, Region Five Development Commission and Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, approve.
Um, excuse me, council president, I think we missed item C.
You know what, well, I might print it, I don't have an item C on my, I must have skipped the line, let me uh.
It is.
You've been standard operating procedures for the fire department.
I do remember reading that, I just didn't print out here. So item C.
Good evening, council president, council members. Uh, before you tonight, uh, you have the updated fire department policy and procedure manual. Um, the past uh nine months or so, we've been working to update the policies. In the past, volunteer fire departments, in a way, kind of operated independently of the city. Maybe that wasn't such a good thing, but we've worked to bring the policies up to date to conform more with the city policies, um make sure we're on good legal uh standing. I consulted with neighboring departments, um the state fire marshal and the League of Minnesota Cities and put a lot of this together. So just looking for you to adopt the policies to go into effect the first of the year.
What is the wish of the council?
Council president, I move that we adopt the fire department policies.
Second.
Motion by- Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Wildigerin? Any discussion?
Now, Mr. President, I have one quick question, Greg. Looks like there went a, a lot of time put into this and I know to, uh, organi- uh, organizations like this that there's a, a chain of command though. I would assume though that you do have a basic open door policy. If somebody needed to come to you, they could without possibly not following that chain of command such as whatsoever.
Definitely, especially with me being the only full-time person, we don't generally operate as a normal military cha- chain of command just cause the other assistant chiefs and captains aren't full-time. So I handle the day-to-day supervision and all of that. So very much so, an open door policy.
Yeah, I thought so. I just thought, I didn't see it in there, so I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Call roll, please.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wildigerin?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zelka?
Yes.
Hirkoc?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Harries?
Now we'll get to item D. Fiscal Agent, Little Falls Way Finding Project, Region Five Development Commission and Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau. Not sure if speaking with this one.
I will, I, I will let, uh, defer this over to Phoebe and we do have Chris Vonberg on the call as well as Katie Rec that can, have been working on this project. Um, and, and can help answer any questions and give us, um, any other information about it.
Sure. Mr. President and councilmembers, um, this is Chris from the Little Falls Convention Visitors Bureau. And the project is a wayfinding project, which in my opinion as Visitors Bureau falls under good for the public overall. And the project would encompass three areas, the history, the natural resources, attractions. And some of the information like the WPA and projects that are associated with, uh, locations, everything would be on public property. Nothing would be on private property. So the players in this would be Minnesota Power for the Natural Resources Warehouse. HPC would be in charge of, uh, overseeing and approving the final information that's in the downtown commercial district. The city engineer plus the finance officer, who I work with all the time, Lori and Greg, to make sure we get it right in the process. Um, we're gonna do everything local, so nothing would be purchased from out of town. And this group is a welcoming committee, which shame on me, I wish I could have been the leader of the welcoming committee, but I wasn't. So they acquired ten thousand dollars from Region Five. They're looking for a fiscal agent and I believe this falls into a tourism project. I would like to ask that the city accept the opportunity for the CDB to be the, um, facilitator. But the City of Little Falls be the host of the funds received from Region Five. That is, that is my request and you don't like when I talk a lot, so ask me questions, please. And I did speak, oh, go ahead.
You go ahead, that's all right.
Okay, I did speak with Dawn Espy and she said because it took a while for this group to find, uh, potential fiscal host, that the extension of the grant, which was going to be July, can be extended. So if the project takes a little longer, so it is done correctly and the information is correct and it falls within all the signage ordinances, that's what we're going to lean on the engine beer and the HPC for as well. Um, everything looks like it's a project that would be suited for tourism. So I would like to see if this would be something that you could all talk about and approve or ask more questions.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilmember Lundberg, discussion. There's no discussion? Call roll, please.
Wildigerin?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zelka?
Yes.
Hirkoc?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Harries? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-seven, decertify tax increment financing district one dash ten, Buckman Hotel Project, adopt. Lori?
Um, yes, before you tonight is Resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-seven, which will decertify district number one dash ten, which was the Buckman Hotel Project. Um, that district has met its statutory maximum duration and therefore we are required to decertify it at the end of this year.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canafala, second by Councilmember Hanson, discussion. Call roll, please.
Lundberg? Yes. Zelka?
Yes.
Hirkoc?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wildigerin?
Yes.
Harries?
Resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-nine, establish water, sewer, garbage and recycling rates, two thousand twenty-one. Lori?
Yes, we have before you tonight Resolution two thousand twenty seventy-nine, which sets our water, sewer, garbage, um, recycling and stormwater rates. Um, as the city administrator discussed in our budget meeting, we have no changes to the water and sewer rates. Um, looking at page one thirteen of one twenty-one or page four of the resolution, there is a small increase to the stormwater utility. Um, currently residential properties pay, um, like it's, it's a formula and it's approximately one-third of these stormwater utilities. So they are paying a dollar and three cents right now. With this increase, um, as a resident, they would be going up to a dollar and twenty-six cents. And then there is also a, um, an increase on the garbage collection fee.
Council President, if I may, the, the change in the garbage collections is only one point five percent of, uh, increase to a previous reason.
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starlee, second by Councilmember Hanson, discussion.
Mr. President, I would just like to make a point that, um, when we voted for that ten-year contract for the garbage haulers, um, I voted against it because I didn't think that, uh, that they were divided up fairly or evenly. And so now to give the increase, um, I'm concerned, but I will, I will vote in favor just because it's for all the haulers and cost of living, there might not have been any increase on fees, but, uh, cost of living increases, oh, but it probably amounts to, so I will vote in favor.
Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Zelka?
Yes.
Hirkoc?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wildigerin?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Harries?
Surface Transportation Block Grant Application, Fourth Street Northeast, approve. Greg?
Good evening. In front of you this evening, we have the transportation block grant application for Fourth Street Northeast. If you recall, in, uh, two thousand twenty-two, we are working with the county to do Fourth Street Southeast. And so we are looking to also apply for a grant to extend that, uh, to Fourth Street Northeast. Now that will be in two thousand twenty-five when that construction will occur. Um, but we are looking at, uh, applying for the grant to see if we can offset some of the costs that we've been paid for that project.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, applying for the surface transportation grant.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starlee, any discussion?
Yes, Council President, um, is that a county road north of Broadway?
No, north of twenty-seven is a city, south of twenty-seven is a county.
So the county road ends when it gets to twenty-seven?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Hirkoc?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canafala?
Yes.
Wildigerin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Harries?
City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions and committees. Does anyone have anything?
Mr. Pres- President, I have a brief comment on the EDA. Um, I'd like to thank all the members of the, the EDA, Lori and John and Carol Anderson. Um, we've been doing some great work. I believe I may have talked about it last meeting with our, um, grants, uh, that have continued with business adversely affected by Executive Order twenty ninety-nine. And, uh, hopefully you've seen and heard some of the advertising that we've been doing for our local businesses. And, uh, to shop local, so I would ask that we all continue to shop local and help our, all of our businesses, please. That's it.
Any announcements? Or any constituent messages that we didn't have time for earlier?
I have an announcement I promised to brush up on my math skills, um, since I was working with a hundred and sixty hours instead of eighty and a less, I'm asking you to be my mentor. Of course.
No one has anything else? We will adjourn our meeting at eight oh two. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Good night.
Good night.